All right, well, first off, good afternoon and welcome to Veterans in Politics International's panel interview for Clark County Commission District Number C. So the way this is going to work is each candidate will get two minutes for introduction, and then you'll also get two minutes at the end for a conclusion. I need all the candidates to understand that this is an interview, it's not a debate, so no candidate can direct questions towards each other or respond to their answers. So the way we're going to go ahead and do this is, time limit wise, each one of you will get one minute and 15 seconds to respond to each panel member's questions. Obviously, I'm not going to interrupt you in the middle of a sentence, but when you hear my timer go off, like you have 15 seconds to wrap up, or then unfortunately, just in interest of time, we'll have to cut your mic, okay? All right, so the first question that will be asked today is going to be by Dr. Madoff.
Thank you very much, Jim, I appreciate that. Gentlemen, first of all, welcome for coming, especially in our trying times. I might as well dig right into the question. You know, we can talk about the economy, we can talk about the employment, Corona, but let's talk about something that's realistic to us right now in the city of Las Vegas. We have a virus that's going here, it's been here for about 20, 25 years, that has destroyed more families and more children than the coronavirus, and that's Las Vegas Family Court. Basically, long story short, I know two Clark County Commissioners very, very well. They've tried to bring up this subject for the last three or four years to the other Commissioners, but it gets tossed by the wayside. We have judges on family court that have absolutely no business being on family court. We have a racist judge, Judge Sandra Palmerance, there was articles in the Las Vegas Review Journal about her, which I facilitated, along with, she was visited by the FBI for possible hate crimes against African-American litigants. In addition, we have just some sampling, Judge Hughes, that basically threatened and was screaming at a little 14 or 15-year-old girl, and basically, she threatened her, was sending her to the, I believe it was West Haven Care. We also have Judge Harder, who shows up basically periodically when he wants to. As Jim said, you both, all three of you have a minute and 15 seconds. This is killing the families and children of Las Vegas. And because the county Commissioners have the power to open up an investigation, we've spoken with the eternal Attorney General, both the previous one, Laxstall, and the current one, Aaron Ford, and it's up to you, gentlemen, if one of you, you know, one of you get in. First of all, we'd like to know what you do about it, and second of all, if we can get a commitment from you on video.
Okay, well, thank you for the question.
Just one second, I just really want to apologize to the candidates, I missed one step. If you'll please just respond to Robert's question, and then afterwards, I will give you guys your two-minute introduction, so I do apologize for that. I'm not a professional moderator by any means, so if you'll respond to the question, and then I'll give you your two minutes, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for the question. Unfortunately, in all my positions, I've never really had a reason to pay attention to the details of family court. I read things in newspaper, I see things on the internet, but I've never really looked into family court judges and what actually happens at family court. I don't know what authority the Clark County Commission has over family court, but I will tell you that as a Clark County Commissioner, whatever authority I do have over Clark County family court, I will be paying much more attention to it. Thank you.
Actually, I'm not satisfied with that, sir, and I'll tell you why. You're a citizen of Las Vegas, how long you been a citizen of Las Vegas for?
Forty years.
Forty years. I've been here 35. Second of all, you have children?
I do.
Okay. The bottom line here is, sir, is that every Las Vegas citizen should be concerned about this. And I completely understand what you're saying, it didn't come across your table or your wheelhouse so that you would get involved. So are you giving us a commitment that if you get elected, sir, you will open up an investigation? Because the Clark County Commissioners do have the power to do that.
Well, my commitment is that I will pay attention to what happens at family court. If I have authority over it, I will have to do that, absolutely. I can't guarantee I'll open up an investigation, I don't know what I would open up an investigation for, but as a member of the Clark County Commission, if I have authority over Clark County Family Court, and I see issues occurring there, I will take a look at it, absolutely. I've done that on the Las Vegas City Council, I've done that as a member of the Board of Regents, I've done that as a police officer. If I see issues going on, and they need to be dealt with, I'm not scared to do that. So my commitment is, I will pay attention to what's going on over there as a Clark County Commissioner.
Okay. You know, my background is, you know, I've worked in the court system, albeit criminal court for 30 years, and, you know, since I've been involved with Veteran in Politics, and specifically Steve Sands, and it's really a very dark side of Las Vegas. Thank you very much. Sir.
Gary Hosea, I will look into it as a county commissioner, but we actually, there's more going on than just judges that are, like Judge Harder, that don't show up or protect different people like that. We need to look at the whole system of family and youth services about the kids that are dying, they're put place back in the homes, and a week later, they're dying. We have some good people in Clark County in the family services, youth and family services, but we need to look further into it as far as the leadership goes, and how we can protect kids that are in the system.
Okay, thank you.
Again, my name's Hunter Kane, so first and foremost, I think it's great that we get to reelect judges every few years. Being a foster parent, I've worked very familiar and very often with the family court system. I've met some judges in there that I wish I could duplicate and put in every courtroom, and I've met some judges that are literally tearing families apart for no other reason than they have the authority to do so. My commitment that I would really want to do for the family courts is not just open up an investigation, one of the things that I would be pushing for in the County Commission is actually for a county and/or state-level IG's office. An IG's office that could regularly look into abuses, not only that's going on in the family court system, but all the other different agencies that are going on here in Clark County. So that's one of the biggest things I would love to be able to do.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you for your response, and I do apologize to the candidates, that should be the first thing you guys get to do, is introduce yourselves, so I do apologize for that. So how we're going to do this is, we'll go ahead and go back in reverse, so we'll start with Mr. Kane. You're given two minutes to introduce yourself, just give a brief background about yourself, and then you'll get two minutes to wrap up at the end. And then also, to my fellow panel members, Dr. Madoff already did that, but when you ask your initial question, if you would also state your name and your background, so that the candidates understand it as well, that would be great. So with that, Mr. Kane, if you would like to go ahead and start your two-minute introduction, please.
Thank you. Again, my name is Hunter Kane, I'm running for Larry Brown's term-limited seat in the District C. If you think District C, think of kind of Decatur and Alta-Churston area and everything kind of northwest, with Rancho being the dividing line. So that's including Summerlin North, Sun City, Centennial Hills, Lone Mountain, all the way up to Kyle Canyon and Crete Air Force Base to include Mount Charleston. First and foremost, you know, I'm hoping to be the first licensed foster parent on the Clark County Commission. I'm a single Clark County foster parent who has raised 15 higher-level-of-care-or-at-risk youth. I was fortunate enough to adopt two of them, one this past November and the one the year before that. I'm hoping to be the first combat veteran to serve in the Commission in nearly 30 years. I'm one of those people that, a month after September 11th happened, I found myself joining the US Army and shipping off where I spent the better part of a decade in the US Army, with service indoor, support in Operation Iraqi Freedom and During Freedom and New Dawn. I was the Director of Community Outreach for Congresswoman Dina Titus and her senior veterans' caseworker, where my main job was literally doing casework and reaching out to the veteran community. I've hosted over 100 different community service events, helped veterans find mental health services and other different type of services around the community, and then on top of that, I was able to help get back more than $2 million to those that I was able to help with their casework. I'm also an openly LGBTQ candidate, so I'm hoping to be Clark County's first openly LGBTQ candidate. Again, when they repealed "Don't Ask, Don't Tell," I found myself going into that community to be able to turn around and say, "How can I help you reverse your discharges that were less than honorable for sexual preference?" On top of that, I'm hoping to be Commission District C's first African-American Commissioner. So I've done a lot of different work, not only the African-American, but the AAPI, the Armenian, Women's, Veterans, Disabled, you name the community, and I've done my best to just try to help them. I am running as a Democrat, but I see myself as a futurist. I know this is a word that's not really used that much, but a futurist is one that really wants to, you know, not only seal up the holes that we have currently, but they want to plan and predict the future. I think that's my two minutes. Yeah, okay, so I'm going to go ahead and stop there, and I'll hopefully talk to you guys more.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Kane, and again, my apologies for not starting it off that way. Mr. Hosea?
Gary Hosea, I am running for Larry Brown's termed-out seat, District C, as a Democrat. I was previously a Republican and ran against Tom Collins and beat Tom Collins in every area except North Las Vegas. I am a 20-year-retired US Army soldier that has served from Vietnam through, to include Desert Storm. I am also employed by Clark County and want to be the first county commissioner coming from Clark County to the county commission seat. Most people do not realize it's a part-time job. I stated in 2008, and will restate it, I want to do this job full-time and not part-time as other candidates want to do. We need a full-time county commission, and that is the first time I will ask all others to go full-time at their current salary and not raise it. I would also like to see a complete audit of Clark County Government Center to include a personnel audit, so that we can get the budget and so that people know where their funds are actually going. Thank you.
Mr. Anthony?
Thank you. First of all, thanks for allowing me to take the opportunity to interview with Veterans in Politics, I very much appreciate it. Again, my name's Starvo S. Anthony, I came to Las Vegas in 1980 to join the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. I had a great 29 years there. I was a police officer for my first 10 years, a sergeant for five years, a lieutenant for four years, and then my last 10 years, I was a captain, and I retired in 2009 after 29 years. In between that 29 years, I ran for the Board of Regents twice and one, served seven years. I graduated from the FBI National Academy, I graduated from the Southern Police Institute Leadership School, I went back to UNLV, got my Master's in Political Science, and ended up getting my PhD in Sociology. The opportunity came up in 2009, it's about time I was ready to retire, to run for the Las Vegas City Council. It was an open seat, Larry Brown was there, he just won the Clark County Commission race, so I decided to run. I ran against five other people, and as was mentioned prior to the start in the interview, I ended up winning by 10 votes. So every vote counts out there, I just want everybody that's watching this to understand that. I ran for my second term, got 78% of the vote, ran for my third term, and I'm in my third term, and again, got 78% of the vote. So I believe the people that I represent in Ward Four think I'm doing a good job. My top priorities on the Las Vegas City Council will basically be the same priorities I have if I become a member of the Clark County Commission representing District C. My number-one priority is always going to be public safety. I believe that that is the number-one priority of the residents who live anywhere in the city of Las Vegas, especially in District C and Ward Four, is they want safe neighborhoods, they want safe parks, they want to be able to walk out the front of their door and look around saying, "I am very proud of where I live," and that's what local government does. That's primarily what they're responsible for, so thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you again very much, Mr. Anthony. So I have a question, and it's not going to be directed towards all three candidates, I have a specific question for each one of you. So I'm going to go ahead and, since Mr. Kane got to go last time, I'm going to go ahead and start with Mr. Anthony. So a lot of people don't know the role of county commission, nor how important it is. I think it's pretty interesting that if you start to explain to people, the Clark County budget is actually almost as large as the state budget. So there's quite a bit of power in what you're running for. You brought up safety before. What specifically does the county commission oversee as far as Metro is concerned? And I'm asking you in specific because I do understand your law enforcement background, and thank you very much for that background as well.
Well, I'm currently on the Fiscal Affairs Committee for Metro. When you look at the way Metro's structured, about 40% of their budget comes from the city, about 60% of their budget comes from the county. When it comes to the actual detention center, the county is completely responsible for their particular budget. So they police both the city and the county, and we, both entities contribute to their budget. The Fiscal Affairs Committee has two members from the county, two members from the city, and a civilian who's the chair, and we actually oversee the budget for Metro. And the Metro budget has actually been pretty interesting. In 2009, when the recession really hit, Metro didn't hire any police officers for about five, six years. They went from two officers per thousand down to 1.75, and what we've been doing aggressively is getting back to two officers per thousand. So when it comes to the Clark County Commission, the City Council, we're responsible for their budget, and the sheriff actually runs the department. But when it comes to policing, I think we all have some interest in that, and that's what's important to me, is not just the law enforcement aspect, but what's called the broken window theory, which some of you have obviously heard of, and that's where local elected officials have to be engaged. They have to be out in the community, talking to people, and finding out what is bothering them in their particular neighborhood, and take care of it, whether it's graffiti, shopping carts, lights out, the little things that will really make a difference in a neighborhood, and that's what elected officials should be doing.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Anthony, and before I ask Mr. Hosea's question, just to introduce myself, for those of you who don't know who I am. My name's Jim Jonas, I am the host of Veterans in Politics International Talk Show, I am a part of the Auxiliary Board of Veterans in Politics. I'm basically a civilian advocate for veterans' issues. Both grandparents served in Korea. My grandfather retired from being a firefighter for the Veterans Hospital in South Dakota. My grandmother was the president of Veterans of Foreign Wars for the South Dakota chapter, so I'm somebody that takes veterans' issues very seriously, even though, and it's my way of paying back, even though I didn't serve myself, and I just want to commend everybody who did serve. And so with that, I want to direct my next question to Mr. Hosea. I know this is kind of a tough question, but that's kind of what I do, is I ask tough questions. Mr. Hosea, you have sought public office quite a few times in recent years. When I talked to people about you, they pretty much wrote you off, they said, "Well, he's a perennial candidate, and he's going to run for whatever office that tends to be open." What would be your response to people that feel that way about you?
I have been a candidate before. I want to be a full-time candidate. Larry Brown has never served as a full-time candidate. Starvo S. Anthony and the City Council have, but yet he's uninformed about the family court system. I feel as a law enforcement official, previous law enforcement official, you need to be informed about all of Clark County, and the citizens need to know how important our budget really is for Clark County, where the money goes to.
I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Hosea, but I need to stop you right there, and just to let the panel members know that, again, this is not a debate, so we don't direct anything towards any one of the candidates, because if we do, then I would have to give Mr. Anthony time to respond, so let's just focus on you and the question, please.
I'm not running to be a part-time candidate, I'm running to be a full-time candidate that has, I believe that Clark County has gotten too big, and we have a lot of people in different areas, City Council, state government, that do not realize how big county government is, as far as why we need full-time representation on the Clark County government seat for things like family court, public works, the county commission, the county manager recently said did away with contracts for Clark County workers. How's that impact them when we have this virus going on right now, and then they're being basically told, "Once the virus ends, you're going to be laid off"? That's not any kind of way to run Clark County government.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hosea, and then my next question will be to Mr. Kane. So in your opening statements, you brought up, you brought up sexual preference and ethnicity. Why are those two things important to your campaign? Why should that matter to us?
Thank you for the question, it's actually a great question. The main reason is because representation matters, for no other different reason. To say that we care about minority issues, and then we allow one district, one seat, to have, you know, one voice, when there's multiple different ethnicities here, is a big deal. Sexual preference is another big deal, because again, representation matters. As we're making budgets, as we're, you know, doing all these different type of things here in the county government, we need to be able to turn around and say, "Hey, look, let's make sure that we have a voice represented in one way or the other." A great example would be, I also brought up in my opening statement about being the first veteran in 30 years. So if we're wondering why there's so many homeless veterans, if we're wondering why veterans are still having a hard time getting employment when it comes to all these different type of benefits, it's because there's no veteran representation on the county commission. So representation matters, and I want the voters to know, "Hey, I'm coming here with a lot of different cards that I'm going to be able to, when I come into these meetings, when I sit on these boards, when I do these different things, I'm here taking these different voices and opinions with you also."
Okay, so my question is for each one of you. Oh, I'm sorry, my name's...
John Paula James.
My name's Gianno Amato, I'm a car salesman here in Las Vegas, Nevada. I've lived here all my life. I, previously before selling vehicles, I ran a nightclub in Utah, so that's my background. Now, my question is, and it's going to be for each candidate, and I want everybody to answer. My question is, would you create a law or back a law and give us your commitment if the citizens in Las Vegas were to get at least 20,000 votes, or at least a certain amount of votes, to unseat a biased judge and require a judge go for a revote if enough signatures were reached? Go ahead.
Thank you for the question. My first response would be no. I don't think having the recall vote is an effective means. Personally, what I, when this election comes around on June 9th, I promise you, everyone's going to be voting for their US House of Representatives, they'll be voting for some of their state senators and assembly persons, and then they're going to skip the rest of the ballot. So the problem is not having a recall every time there's a bad vote. The problem is how do we get people out there to make the vote? So one of the things I'm working with, not only with my campaign, but there's a few other different organizations who will be sending out voter recommendation cards to voters in the district, starting early next month, as the mail-in ballots are coming in. The reason is, is if we have the voter recommendation cards of the judges that are effective and are not effective, then it makes it a lot easier for people to say, "Even if I don't know who this judge is, I know Hunter, I trust what Hunter's planning on doing and he's doing, or I trust these other organizations, so therefore, let me turn around and just go ahead and pick those judges." I think what we need to do is get people more involved in picking their judicial candidates.
No, I probably would not either, Gary Hosea, because we do need to have our candidates know and be informed, just like I said, Clark County is a part-time job. There are a lot of people on the county commission right now, and previously, Tom Collins, they had a vote to keep it part-time, for a reason. We need to educate the voters as to those judicial candidates that Hunter said, so that they have a vote, and that their vote is heard and listened to, as to which candidate should or should not be a judge.
Okay, now, just to make it clear, before you answer, Mr. Anthony, what happens here in Las Vegas, especially in the family courts, okay? No matter what a judge does, they do not get recused. So to say, you know, that you wouldn't call for a revote, I mean, kind of don't make sense, but that's basically saying that a judge can shoot somebody in the middle of a courtroom and get away with it, and you wouldn't ask for a revote. So you got to remember, judges, especially one in family courts here in Las Vegas, is giving away free attorneys, you know, to a woman that, you know, she said in open court that she makes $2,000 every single month, and he still gave her a free attorney because he didn't like the other litigant. So just to make it clear, I want to make sure that everybody knows, I mean, there's numerous infractions that judges can do, so go ahead, Mr. Anthony.
Thank you. Well, we do have a system in the state of Nevada to remove elected officials, not just from an election, but a recall vote, as you mentioned. So if some person or some organization goes through the procedure to recall an elected official, then they're recalled, then they're removed, then that's fine with me.
Great answer.
Good afternoon, or good morning, it's afternoon, gentlemen, my name is Michael Yupko, my background, I'm a first graduate in my family from a university, Bowling Green State University in Ohio. I had a criminal justice and psychology degree, double degree, double major. Became a police officer in 1986, my first job out of college, did that for a couple years. At the time, different federal agencies were hiring, I applied for several of them, and the FBI hired me, survived 16 weeks in Quantico, and requested Miami or Tampa, because I knew some Spanish. I thought, "Well, there's a lot of action in Miami and Tampa, Florida in general," and they sent me to Las Vegas. So I got here in 1991, served five years with the Bureau, got out, worked with some other people, and from '99 to 2014, I was a licensed private eye and process server. Since '14, beginning of '15, I've been retired. My question, gentlemen, is to all three of you, and I have to do a lot of disclaimers before I ask this question. First of all, the exits are there and over there, that's for the fire, and in case you don't like my particular questioning, because I'm a person with the FBI background and my investigative background, you know, we're here today not just to listen to platitudes and generalizations, we're here to get to the meat and nuts. So I think the commission is considered by many to be the most powerful governmental body in the state of Nevada. The movie Unbroken, they said, "If you can make it, you can take it." Well, I don't want you to take it personally, my question, I just want you to take it and answer it, and give us a direct, candid answer. How do you intend to avoid corruption or any perceived behavior that would be interpreted How do you intend to avoid corruption, or any perceived behavior that would be interpreted as such, when you're on the county commission? I'd like Mr. Jose to go first, Mr. Anthony second, and Mr. Kane third. So, go ahead, Mr. Jose.
First of all, I would not take any campaign donations from Sheriff Lombardo, from others that have appeared in newspaper, that have shown to want bias or special favors from the county commission. I am the only candidate that I know of, that's run before, yes, I've run before, but want the position to be full-time, and will be, do it full-time, for the people and citizens of Las Vegas, and why I want to open up the budget. If you have an HOA, you have an audit every year. If, if you're an individual, you're audited every year. In the past, we've had a judge removed by the powers that be. Judge Gonzalez was removed because she had a foot fetish and other things in the county commission. Right now, we have a problem within Clark County of people getting elected and them looking the other way, because it's a part-time job. They, they award developers money based upon the part-time job. They back up to the trough, so to speak, and load their hip pockets with money from different agencies, including our sheriff, that right now has a problem with leadership. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Also, I want to mention, Mr. Jose, I do commend your grit and resilience for running for office several times. It takes a lot out of you, so even though you have lost in previous, at least you're trying again today. Mr. Anthony, would you respond?
Thank you. That's actually a great question, when you look at the history of the Clark County Commission. Unfortunately, quite a few of them have ended up going to prison for felony charges, and as far as I am concerned, as you know, going through an academy in law enforcement, the thing that they drill into your head from day one is integrity. Integrity, integrity, integrity. And if you ask anybody at Metro about my integrity, it is beyond reproach, after 29 years. I served seven years on the Board of Regents, I've been on the Las Vegas City Council for, for 10 years, and I have no, I am known as someone who, who, whose integrity is the most important thing that's, that is important to me, and the only one that can take that away from me is me. So, I'm 63 years old. I have had a wonderful life, and it's because I take honesty and courage and excellence as a top priority, and there, I'm going to do that on the Clark County Commission. That is not going to change absolutely one bit, so thank you.
Okay, just want to comment, Mr. Anthony, and for the other panel members, before you respond, Mr. Kane, I'm not making any insinuations about, you know, influence peddling or kickbacks or anything like that. What I'm saying, in my background, I had a chance to, as a new agent, tag along to the guys and gals that were working political corruption. And unfortunately, to this day, the Bureau considers every case opened, even though it may be closed. So, I'm not allowed to comment on specific political figures, and I had the pleasure and, and horror of following, surveilling, videotaping, photographing, you know, wiretapping, and listening to the things that they did, because they would say one thing and do another, okay? And that's hypocrisy to the greatest. So, I don't want to insinuate, Mr. Anthony, I know your background, sir, I've done my homework on you and everyone else today, you know, the best I could, but I want you to know that it's an important issue, because we know things get done when there's sunlight. And the only thing that works in the darkness is mushrooms who are fed BS. I don't want to be fed BS. Go ahead, Mr. Kane, respond, please.
Absolutely. So, I think it's a perfect segue for one of the things I mentioned earlier, which I do want to repeat here. To answer your question directly, you can't. Corruption will be a part of politics, unfortunately, and especially on the county commission. The county commission serves both as a executive and legislative branch, so not only are they making their own rules, they're enforcing their own rules. So, with all of that power that's going on there, you can't. What we need is, we need to have a county office of inspectors general. We need to have a nonpartisan group that is able to investigate and have more authority than the commissioners do when it comes to what they can and can't see. When we're talking about what's going on with DFS, when we're talking about what's going on in the court system, when we're talking about what's going on even within the commissioner's own office, the IG should have that free rein to be able to turn around and investigate, audit, inquire into, open up whatever it may be, and then that's office, if we're doing it as, well, at least in the military, the IG's office, you can request any type of documents from there, so therefore, it also be very transparent and open to the public. Here's what we found, here's what we know to be true. We need an IG's office on the county level.
Thank you very much. Listen, first of all, I want to thank you for all serving in, in the military, appreciate that. Second of all, the next question I have is directed to all three of you, gentlemen. I would like a, a, a one-word response to this. Oh, yeah, my name is Dr. Robert Medoff. I'm a retired criminal court psychologist, as a, was a consultant for across North America for various attorneys, and I started the ice hockey program here as a volunteer 30 years ago, where I'm sure that you've met Frank Smacka, and that, that goes back a long time, when he was police chief at Mon Charleston. Anyway, what, the question I would like to ask, a yes or no response, are you gentlemen familiar with the Las Vegas Police Foundation and the Las Vegas Judicial Foundation?
Yes.
Are you men-
Yes.
And yes. Okay. You know, this leads me to a major question, a major concern that I have. Are you also familiar that the chairperson of the Las Vegas Police Foundation has a criminal record, specifically domestic abuse, two charges, and also a number of other charges as well? He's had two TPOs that are placed against him, one locally here in Las Vegas, and one out in the Washington State. The reason I know this, I was asked to, to look into it. Basically, the, the story goes that he's a very wealthy real estate developer here in the city, and he buys and sells politicians, and we also contacted some of the other board members of the Police Foundation and the Judicial Foundation, and they indicated, I, I figured that with the documents that we have, we have 42 exhibits from the court, and the police, and criminal charges, and his convictions, and he's still sitting. How, how does this go on? The gentleman's name is Jordan Wirth. Do any of you know that gentleman? No? Okay. Obviously, the, the first step, or the procedure is, I thought the, the boards of the Police Foundation and the Judicial Foundation would call him in and ask him what was going on, but instead, they totally covered up the situation. You know, they, they circled the wagons. How would you gentlemen deal with this sort of situation? There are 42 exhibits, public domain knowledge, and he's still sitting. Sir?
Well, I don't have any knowledge of what, what you're speaking to. I, I know about the Police Foundation, I know the good things that they do, but I don't know who that gentleman is. They do have a board, they do contribute to law enforcement, foundation items. I would, I would hope that the board of directors for the Police Foundation, as well as other law enforcement, take a look at something like that and find out what's going on. And if, now that you've brought it to my attention, I appreciate that, and I'll, I'll kind of keep that in mind during my travels.
Thank you very much, sir.
I have no knowledge of that person, and therein again, I would hope that the Police Foundation would look at, but we have a lot of other people similar to that in our development community, that have made campaign donations previously to City Council and others, that they should be looked into. And as a county commissioner, that was, would be one of the first things that I would do, other than to ask for a complete audit of our budget, and to have an in-house audit of personnel, because having worked for Clark County, I have seen one position, a person doing it really well, and then dying, or having cancer, and then it being replaced by four people of lower, for a lower pay scale. We don't need that. Now, we're fixed with a bunch of layoffs, possibly, after the virus issue. But I would look into that, and that's one reason I don't take contributions from in certain individuals, because of duty, honor, and country, something I learned of in the US Army.
Thank you. Mr. Kane?
So, I would take this just like a constituent inquiry. I mean, rather, it's you need a new speed bump, or stoplight, or whatever it may be. You've literally made a request right now, saying, "We want someone to look into this." I would get my staff to start looking into it right away. It's the same way. If you send me the information now, I can see if I can't get it over to the mayor's office, I'll see if I can't get it over to some of the congressional offices, you know, to be able to say, you know, when you request information from them, they're supposed to give you a handwritten letter back saying, "Hey, you know, here's what we found out." So, rather, it's true, false, here's the circumstances, whatever it may be. So, I'm going to treat this literally like a constituent inquiry, and then, you know, get on it right away, see if we can resolve it.
Just to add, and I, I know I'm running out of time, the, the bottom line here is that the Review Journal was told, we, we actually saw the hard copy of the, of the, of the newspaper article that was going out, and then it, it got kiboshed. The, and, you know, it's, it's really funny to me, because, you know, especially domestic abuse, don't the police arrest people on that? And, and, you know, especially with the other charges that, it's all online right now. We, myself and Mr. Sanson posted it. We have 42 hard copies of, of the court documents.
Well, on, on your behalf, if, if it's okay with V.I.P.I., I'll, I'll actually, I have a few congressional contacts that I'll see if I can send them the information, and say, "Hey, can you look into this and just see what you can find out?" The US representatives and senators have a lot of authority in getting local information that a lot of people just don't know about.
Yeah. The, the FBI, actually, it's not jurisdiction, it's basically, it's the in-house. I, I do have a number of friends back from the late 80s that are, that are FBI agents and supervisors, so, and I'm only 21, can you believe that? The thing is that-
I'm 18.
But it just concerns me, as a citizen. Okay?
Okay. Panel members, can you guys do me a favor? Like, we're, we're actually familiar with the candidates, however, we're having, like, our camera has to keep panning back and forth, so when you ask a question, can you make sure on the microphone you direct exactly who you're, just tell us exactly who you're asking the question to, so that way the camera can keep up?
Okay, Mr. Anthony, this next question's for you, and it's going to be about transparency. So, do you believe in body cams, and what do you think about officers that turn off their body cams to hide their crimes, and the DA not turning over them body cams and pretending like they don't exist once trial comes?
I do believe in body cameras. I think officers should, should wear body cameras. I was actually the captain of Internal Affairs for one year, when I was at Metro, and for something like that, what you're talking about, somebody turning their body camera off when it should be on, that's easy. You do an investigation, you find out what happened, you find out if they violated any policies, and if they didn't, you exonerate them, and if they did, you discipline them. So, that's how, that's really how it works in law enforcement, and when I was in Internal Affairs, I had the great opportunity to exonerate police officers where false allegations were made against them, and unfortunately, I had to recommend termination for some officers that had gross negligence when it came to violating public policy and the public trust. So, that's how you handle somebody like that in law enforcement.
Okay, and what would you say, what, what would be the percentage of, let's say, if you, if you were part of the internal investigations of officers that you had to terminate for injustices like I just was asking you about?
Well, I don't recall doing any investigations on body camera violations. In fact, I don't even know if we had, I don't even believe we had body cameras when I was in Internal Affairs. I don't really think we had body cameras until after I left Metro. It would, it would depend. It would depend on why they turned the body camera off, what were they trying to hide? Was it intentional? Was it unintentional? When they turned the body camera off, were they really trying to hide some kind of gross negligence that was going on? So, if they violated procedure, it would be between a written reprimand and termination, depending on the situation.
Okay, my next question is, would you back a law, and I want everybody to answer this, would you back a law that requires all police officers to film 100% of the time and never turn their cameras off? Go ahead, Mr. Anthony.
Well, I'd have to think about that. I mean, if you're, if, if, if two officers go to lunch, and they're sitting there having-
Let me stop you right there. I'm not saying, I mean, we're, we're talking about if there's a crime that, that was committed, and, you know, and they're investigating a crime, and, you know, depending, of course, there's different, you know, circumstances where, you know, they're not going to film, you know, if they're going to lunch or dinner or anything like that. I'm talking about if they're in the middle of an investigation, would you back a law that would require police officers to keep their cameras on 100% of the time?
It would depend on what the law looked like. I mean, what's the penalty? What does it mean by keeping the camera on all the time? You'd have to look at the specific language. I'd have to take a look at, is it necessary to have a law? I mean, are, are policies and procedures in place with the police department to already handle that? So, to turn that, to turn that into a, a department violation and make it criminal, that's a pretty big step. So, I would have to actually sit down and spend some time thinking about that, whether to actually make turning your camera off a criminal violation, especially when, as I mentioned before, if you turn off a camera in order to hide some kind of criminality, or hide a part of an investigation, there's already laws on the books to deal with some stuff like that. It's called obstruction of justice and things of that nature. So, I can't tell you I would back a law like that unless I actually looked at it.
Okay, Mr. Jose, would you please respond?
I can't tell you that I would back a law like that either, because there is the Police Protective Association, Attorney Rogers, there are laws, there are already on the books for instances like that, and it depends, you arrive and the person is totally decapitated. You may film it and then turn off your body cam. I mean, there are different sets of circumstances where you might turn off your body cam, and I would have to investigate it further to see why, or why not, we need to have a law to turn off body cams. I believe that we need body cams, and they should be on all the time, but I would have to look and see as to laws already in place, obstruction of justice, as Starveos mentioned.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jose. And Mr. Kane?
I haven't thought about that before, and actually, my, my first thought is, yes. It's paid by public funds, so I've always been a big opponent, or big advocate, sorry, of one person who, police officer, public building, public spaces should be recorded at all times, if that is what the people decide that they want to do. I think the question that I would ask next is, what happens to all that footage? And the first glance I'm thinking of is that, you know, if we start recording all these different things, whose job is it to review? You know, one of the different things I would like to see is, we have a, a Metro Citizen Review Board, and I know I was talking with some of my staff before, and I would love to have the Citizen Review Board, where, you know, just the same way that you would clock out at work, is you come over here, you drop off your body cam footage to the Citizen Review Board, so it has that citizen, or that civilian intermediate area. It collects, protects the police in ongoing investigations, as Mr. Jose was talking about, and at the same time, you know, if there's any citizens that are actually involved in any type of crimes or anything like that, it protects them until court, and at the same time, you'll have a citizen and community partners that will overview the body footage of what's going on with the cameras. Yeah, first glance, I say, "Yeah, yeah, absolutely."
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kane. All right, so, just in the interest of time, we're looking at, it's 12:47 right now, and I want to make sure each candidate gets their two minutes of closing time. So, Michael, if- So, Michael, if you can please ask the final question of the candidates, and then we'll turn it over for their closing statements.
Okay, this question will be for all three candidates. I'd like Mr. Kane to go first, then Mr. Anthony, then Mr. Hosea. And please keep it brief, because we're in the interest of time. Years ago, they did a study, and they talked to little kids. They said, "What's the most important thing in your neighborhood?" And they said, "Stop signs and stoplights." Young, five, six, seven-year-olds. They asked adults, as far as politics goes, what's the most important thing in the system? Like, 72% said, "A system of checks and balances." So my question is, we've had so many issues, I don't know if it would come up before the County Commission, or you as a commissioner for District C, but we've had not only family court corruption, we've had prior constables who were taking money who both got caught and did not get caught. We've had, you know, other members on other county boards abused their privileges and travel when there was no travel money or when they could have pulled up Skype or the Internet. So my question to you is, what do you see as the most important area for the system of checks and balances in the county? And I would also say, in conjunction with that, what are the three most important improvements you would see, which would be three, two, one, one being the most important? And please, I know it's a convoluted question, but go ahead. Mr. Kane, first.
I think for the checks and balances, I kind of hate to sound like a broken record, but an inspector's general's office, an independent office that is separate from the County Commission that would be able to investigate these things, have free rein to investigate governmental agencies by then. When it comes to three, top three, the third one would probably be addressing the housing issue. Right now, we need to build homeless housing, we need to build veteran housing, all these different things, and we need to help have services to prevent homelessness. So a lot of these people that are currently homeless could have been avoided if we had the programs in place. The second thing, and I've talked about this a little bit, is that I want to create a County Department of Veteran Services, where the entire job of this department would be to consolidate, vet, and promote veterans' organizations. So we have a lot of great nonprofits here locally, a lot of other great organizations that do things for veterans, but there's no way of getting that word out. Me, as a veteran, have no idea that there's an organization that can help me get a pet for free.
Okay, okay. I need to cut you off, Mr. Kane. Go ahead, Mr. Anthony, the answer that, quickly as you can.
Well, when it comes to checks and balances, the most important is open public dialogue. I mean, everything that government does needs to be done in the public, whether it's, things are posted on the Internet, websites. If the public knows what elected officials are doing and what government's doing, we're going to be much better off. So that's the most important. When it comes to the top three issues, you can really put all, really, all the issues into going out in the community and talking to people and finding out what's important to them. And I've done that my entire life. I did it with community-oriented policing, I did it with problem-oriented policing. I do it today. I just go out in the community, you talk to folks, and you find out it's the stop sign that's really bothering them. It's not there, and they want a stop sign, you put a stop sign in. You know how, what impact you have on people's lives when you do something like that? They're not really paying that much attention, what's going on in Washington, D.C. It's local government that gets things done, whether you're a police officer, or a paramedic, or firefighter, or an elected official, just going out in the neighborhood and talking to folks. So I could give you 100 stories of people that have told me something, and I got it done for them, and they are so happy about it, it's unbelievable.
I'll hold you to that. I'd like to hear those stories. Mr. Hosea, briefly, go ahead.
I believe that checks and balances need to be integrity, honesty, and open, inclusive government, and that's one reason I'm running for full-time. Recently, we put our homeless people out in the community, out in Cashman, on the ground. But yet, San Diego, they put them in closed convention center. We need to look at the homeless population and try to get them back into the mainstream of, and there needs to be different offices within Clark County. Right now, if you look at homeless structure for Clark, if you look at homeless structure for Clark County, all you will see is a phone number, no department or anything, and it could even be served by different grants, a grant fund or something. But we need to look at all of Clark County. That's one reason I want to have an open budget as far as where the money is going, so that we can improve our first responders' training, our police training, and getting the money out to the neighborhoods that need it. And that's like...
Okay. Okay. Mr. Hosea? That was everybody correct. So I didn't mess up. Like you said, not a professional moderator. All right. So at this point, I mean, I want to give all of you, if you don't need to take the two minutes, don't, but I encourage you to take the two minutes. Just as a quick side note, not a real long story or anything here, I just want to thank all three of you gentlemen, no matter who wins this race. Public service is something that's near and dear to my heart. I don't think enough people are involved in public service, and running for office is probably the most challenging, stressful thing a person can do. So you have to have a certain level of dedication and commitment to the community that a lot of people don't. So I really want to thank you guys, and no matter who wins this race, I encourage you guys to please make sure that you pass that along to your peers, to, we need to start getting, as I always say, active citizens. Free government requires active citizens, so we need a more active citizenry. Mr. Kane, if you would like to start your two minutes, look into the camera, tell the listeners and viewers, like, why they should go vote for you, contact information, how they get involved in your campaign?
Absolutely. So again, my name is Hunter Kane, and I'm running for Larry Brown's term-limited seat in the Northwest. I'm proud to have received my first national endorsement from the LGBTQ Victory Fund. I'm proud to receive my second national endorsement from Run for Something as a champion of innovation. I'm proud to receive my third national endorsement from a group called Vote Pro Choice as a champion for women's rights. On top of that, locally, I'm glad that the very first African-American one came from Ms. Hannah Brown, who's the president emeritus from the Urban Chamber of Commerce. I'm happy that my first veteran endorsement came from Richard Carrion, the former president for Nevada Veterans Association. I mention these different things because there are a lot of other different groups and people that stand behind me, not to mention the dozens of foster parents and foster families that are saying, "We want you to be in here to be able to make the changes that we need to be able to make." Vegas is not just growing, but it's growing expeditionally. So one of the different things that we need to do is we need to have elected officials who are doing their best, not just to plan for today, but to plan for tomorrow. You don't get this when you have the people who just use this seat as just another stepping stone. You know, "Hey, I did this job, and now I'm going to do this one, I'm going to come over here." We're wondering about corruption and things like this. I'm saying the best way of getting people to not be corrupt is stop keeping them in office. You know, we need to have a set limit when it comes to, whether it's state or local, where you're just saying, "No more," after a certain time. Why? Because then it leads to corruption. There's a lot of information you can find about me. You can find out more information on hunterkaneforcommission.com. You can also search me up on Facebook, Instagram, or Twitter. Just look for Kane for C. It's C-A-I-N-F-O-R-C on any of the social media platforms, and then you can always feel free to send me a text, 725-212-0560. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kane. Mr. Hosea?
I'm Gary Hosea, and I'm running as a full-time candidate for District C for Larry Burns Brown's termed-out seat. You can contact me at garyhosea.com, which is currently under construction. My phone number is 702-525-1383. I'll answer any of your questions. That's my cell phone. And if you see me on the street, you can contact me there. You can also contact me on my Twitter page, which is @GaryHosea, Instagram, which is @GaryHosea, or any other means that you can try to contact me. I will be open and inclusive for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hosea, and I do apologize to, so, Councilman Anthony, if you would like to give your final two minutes. Sorry, I wasn't addressing you appropriately.
You can call me Starvus, that's fine. Again, my name's Starvus Anthony. I am a candidate for the Clark County Commission, District C. It's been an honor to represent the residents of Ward Four in the city of Las Vegas for the last 10 years, and I would like to continue doing that for not only the residents of Ward Four, who are completely in District C, but all the residents of District C. I think they believe I'm doing a good job for them when it comes to helping people and solving problems in our neighborhoods and really shaping public policy. And I know you mentioned it's stressful, but I really enjoy doing that. That's what I've done for the last 40 years, and I want to continue doing that on the Clark County Commission. You can reach me at starvusanthony@gmail.com. My cell phone, 702-812-0123, and my website is starvusanthonyfordistrictc.com. And I just want to thank veterans in politics for taking the time to interview me today, and I would be honored to have your endorsement.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, that is going to conclude our panel interview for Clark County Commission, District Number C. Thank you.[1783.58][1783.58][music]